To the April 12th Douglas County Commission Work Session today, our work session is with the Douglas County Heritage Partners Collective, and they're going to talk to us about their sustainability initiatives. This is a work session, so we do not take public comment. If you would like to provide public comment, you're welcome to do so on this item or any item pertaining to Douglas County business at our 5:30 business meeting. This is for informational purposes only, and we will not be voting on anything at the end of this. So with that, I turn it over to Sarah to introduce our guests.
And before we do that, I just want to mention that Commissioner Reed is not able to attend today to this work session. She is participating in the National Association of Counties Familiar Faces Initiative in Johnson County, and that's keeping her occupied from this meeting, but she has assured me she'll be listening to a recording of this work session and will be in contact with folks if she has questions with this. I'm turning it over to Jill or Caitlin.
I'll start us off. Yes, so yeah, let's. Jill Joliker, Assistant County Administrator. I have the pleasure of working with our Heritage Program Coordinator Caitlin Amerlin, and I'm going to let her and our heritage partners introduce themselves. And then we'll end, if we start with Caitlin, we'll end with Steve Novak, who's going to lead the initial part of the, of a presentation that I'll bring up here on screen, and then it will end with Caitlin, and then we'll hopefully have plenty of time for conversation with the commission. I know we have several other of our heritage partners, so we may be playing musical chairs with conversation questions after the initial slide deck, but with that, I'm going to hand it off to Caitlin.
Okie dokes. I'm Caitlin Amerlin. I'm the new Heritage Conservation Coordinator for Douglas County. I just started a little over a month ago now, and I'm really excited to be here. It puts me in a really neat position in the community, and I'm excited to explore that further. And I'm joined by two of our council members here. If you guys want to introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Amy Van Der Ee, and I am on the council for the HCC.
And I'm Mike Delaney. I'm also a member of the HCC.
And I'm Steve Novak. I'm the Executive Director of the Douglas County Historical Society, and I'm also speaking on behalf of representatives of the Udora Area Historical Society, the Compton Historical Society, the Clinton Lake Historical Society, the Santa Fe Trail Historical Society. Did I miss anyone? Oh, and the Blackjack Battlefield and Nature Park.
The slides that are up on here, Steve, are you going to cover these first couple?
I can walk us through these first.
Sounds good.
Yes. So if we're ready, first I'll start by saying thank you for the opportunity to get to talk to you more about what it is that we do, and also about the way we've been thinking about how it is that we do what we do and how we, how we serve the county. Really, we, as a group of organizations, have been working together on a programmatic basis for quite some time, you know, sharing our sites or, or working together to present different kinds of programs to the public. But thanks to the pandemic, opportunities for working together in different ways started to show up. And we realized that as we were looking at opportunities for relief funds or trying to help each other, find new ways of doing old things, that there were great opportunities for really expanding our impact and our reach. If we worked together, and it, and it really made us look at, you know, how do we resource our operations? How, what kind of impact we have in the county as a collective rather than just as individual organizations? What are our needs in general, and where are those things in common? And also, what sort of shared purpose do we have? I started with a slide about the capital improvement projects because securing the ARPA funding in 2022 has been our biggest collective achievement. And what those projects are able to do is really transformative at the historic sites in terms of helping us preserve the sites we're responsible for and also increasing the public access at, at those sites. We have, it looks like all but one or two of the projects in some form, either moving forward or completion. The Blackjack Trust, the parking lot at the nature park is finished, as are the ADA compliant restroom at the Watkins Museum, the roof at the Udora Community Museum, and the chairlifts at the Territorial Capital Museum. The construction project that will add ADA compliant restrooms at the Wacarosa Valley Heritage Museum is already underway. You can see their photo of their site under constructions. The ADA compliant elevator renovation at the Watkins is out for bid right now. We'll know on, on Wednesday of next week how far over budget it's going to be. And then the other projects that are listed there, the window work at the Watkins Museum, some additional preservation projects at several sites and Territorial Capital Museum, and the bell tower on the Clearfield One Room Schoolhouse, those projects are waiting to be scheduled, but contractors have been identified for them. All right, and this is just a little bit of an update, and I want to invite any of the other heritage areas to, or the heritage sites to share examples of how we've been working together. But these were sort of the categories of ways that we've been working together really for quite some time. But as we move through that list, it's new ways that we're thinking of, of, of working together. Like I mentioned before, we've partnered on programs quite a bit, really going back perhaps almost 25 years with the Civil War on the Border collaboration that had programs going on at different sites, all looking at Douglas County's early history. We, in the last few years, have put forward and been successful at applying for grant funds to be used collectively. In 2021, we received a grant from the National Endowment for Humanities, and that helped us build lesson plans that would coordinate with and create curriculum connections to field trips to our sites. This year, this year, we are working on funds from a 2022 grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services Inspire Program, which is about building on those lesson plans and creating online resources connected with our sites that will help schools and teachers that can't come to our sites still take advantage of those lesson plans. We are using shared educational resources. It, it seems, you know, unnecessary to keep reinventing the wheel. And when we have activities that we've developed for some of our programs, and they work out at Clinton Lake, we provide the resources and the materials for them to do it, often even we can provide people to help facilitate. Udora, when they do school tours, sometimes they like to use handling objects. Well, we have the same handling objects, so we're able to share those things back and forth. And it just means we only have to make one investment in resources, and they, they end up providing benefits at all of our sites. And then in terms of shared infrastructure, we have on kind of an occasional basis when someone needs to be able to make reservations for a ticketed event. They don't have to create a reservation system. We can take those reservations. We always have someone staffing our office with, you know, that can answer the telephone. So using our number provides a way for the public to get information without having to rely on, in a volunteer organization, someone catching someone at home. So that kind of thing works. We've been working for a number of years, it might even be five already, to help staff during the summertime, the Wacarosa River Valley Heritage Museum for the Clinton Lake Historical Society. They, they're a completely volunteer-run organization. We already have an existing human resources and payroll system. It doesn't add any expense to our operations if we hire their staff person, and they reimburse this for us, and then they don't have to do any of the tax things or follow up on that. It's just part of our system. So that has been a way that we've been able to make things a little bit easier on them and still allow them to staff their museum over the summer. And then we're really thinking about ways that we can address needs that none of us are able to address right now or address very well. And one of them has been public research requests. Some of them, you know, take a few minutes and you can, you can get, send people on their way. Others might actually involve hours and hours of research. And some organizations don't have anyone who can do that amount of research. So what we thought we would be able to do, and we're going to experiment with that this summer, is bring on a part-time research assistant, probably house them at the Watkins Museum. If we're lucky, we can find a work-study student and work on, work on compensating them with support from the KU work-study system. But then use research fees that we would charge to cover the cost of, of that staff position, but then make their responsibility addressing research requests, no matter which site they go to, and draw on research materials at all of the sites.
I have a question. So in terms of like public research requests, as soon as people are calling in looking for either family heritage or area of interest or a study project or something, is there a threshold where those requests are charged for? Or is that always offered for free?
At this point in time, it seems as though all of the sites are offering them for free. What we're realizing is that, you know, offering a, fulfilling a request that takes, you know, a 10-minute trip to a file or a little bit of time digitizing documents and sending them on is one thing, and one where you would spend, you know, three of your five days at work fulfilling that is another. So we thought for those more elaborate and time-consuming projects where people really want us to provide their answer, they, you know, they don't want to just have some access to materials so that they could find their own answer. They just want us to answer their question, that we would charge probably an hourly fee for that, which is kind of common with some other historical agencies.
Yeah, it sounds like those conversations are already happening in terms of what is that threshold? And how do we determine what is something that is a public service as part of our historical infrastructure and what is a little bit beyond that, especially if a staff person is being required to, specifically to manage some of those research requests?
Well, that becomes time that they're not doing on a public program or processing collections. So we have to kind of balance that out. But we are all committed to providing access to our heritage resources for free. You know, and, and often all it takes is setting up an appointment and us pulling some materials, and people will do the research on their own in our own facilities. That's easier for some of us than others, depending on what our facilities are like and, and how publicly available they are just because of people's time. But we're, we're always able to make accommodation at the Watkins Museum because we have extended regular public hours, which is, you know, one of those resources that we can share with the other organizations. In, in terms of working through those, those collaborative efforts, it's really made us start to think about our organizations in a different kind of way and to think about how we can achieve a centralized purpose in a, in a common way. And I think we've really begun kind of a transition into, into establishing new forms of working relationships and also thinking about how we align with the HCC and their, their strategic plan, goals that the county has, and how our activities are actually supporting a, a vision for heritage preservation and interpretation that is bigger than just the individual visions of our, of our own organizations. Here at the, in, in the last slide from the, from the heritage partners, we've really been thinking about how is it that we can, that we can move forward? And like I said, aligning ourselves with a broader county effort. And, well, you know, part of that has involved all of us. This is where I change my page here, looking at our own visions and what we think the possibilities and opportunities are for our own sites. And then collectively, you know, describing what our, our shared responsibilities and our, and our, our shared goals are, aligning those activities with the strategic, the strategic plan of the HCC. And then for the first time for 2004, we looked at what we were all working on, identified where the common ground was, and identified a set of goals for 2024. A lot of them have to do with taking advantage of that new accessibility that the ARPA infrastructure improvements are, are doing. So we have a better sense of what we're achieving as a group. And in order to figure out how do we go about then achieving these things we want to do, we did, you know, pretty typical strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis to identify, you know, what are the things we need to be thinking about in terms of how do we keep our organizations moving forward? How do we assure that we're available for the public and sustain our operations? And how do we meet the ends that we've identified are really important? Then in terms of strengths, the, the, probably the single biggest strength of all of our organization is that we're the stewards of the county's publicly accessible historic sites, and we maintain and preserve the tangible heritage materials that tell the stories of our county's past. But we also, because we're all membership organizations, we have established communications networks that because of our locations really stretch all the way across the county. And we have public, we then maintain public gathering venues that are in all parts of the county as well. We have a large volunteer base. It's explained somewhere in the, the little background information that I provided for you, but I think it's about 1,400 people who volunteer for our organizations collectively, which is a tremendous network and a tremendous resource that helps us achieve our ends. And we have a lot of experience with public engagement. The reason why we exist is to help people understand about the heritage of the community that they're a part of. So we have experience doing that. We have techniques that allow us to do that. And we have practice in, in being able to do that and build a reputation as fulfilling that role in our communities. In terms of weaknesses, we're still dealing with the effects of the pandemic, at least when it comes to getting people to come to our sites. And I was just talking with Janet before the meeting, our school groups have still not recovered. You know, this time of year, I'm sure all of our sites were, were really booked up with field trips, and they disappeared during the pandemic, and they're just not, not coming back at that same level. It's what's making us realize maybe we need to think about new ways that we can still fulfill an educational purpose for the school systems.
Is that tied to school funding, lack of school funding, or, or some other reason why you think school groups aren't coming?
I think it's a little bit more complicated than that. I think some of it is the teachers have just gotten out of the habit of taking students out to field trips, and those, they're not easy to arrange. Do they want to jump back into that? Some of it, I think, is funding. It may just be impossible, or schools might be telling teachers, you can't take, you can't take a field trip this year. Some of it still may be safety concerns. You know, we know what's happening to the kids when they're in the classroom. Do we want to haul them off to some other site when, or who knows what they might be exposed to? And then I think the, the last part of it is there, there may not be, and this is where we have some work to do, much of a sense of value placed on those field trips as a way of extending or, or enlightening the classroom experience and fulfilling the same goals. We now have resources in place that will allow us to do that with the lesson plans we developed with the NEH grant. But we haven't had an opportunity to get those out in front of teachers very much. So it may just be some awareness building. On the plus side, we're not the only organizations that are struggling with the return of field trips. The National World War I Museum is down just like we are. So it seems to be a kind of thing that museums are dealing with.
I was participating in Freedom's Frontier trustees meeting today, and they have a program called Bus on Us that they offer bus transportation to school districts, and they can't give it away. I mean, they're, you know, schools aren't asking for it, and it's not because the buses aren't available or because some funding for the bus isn't available. They've got issues with being able to line up substitute teachers. When the classroom teacher is off with her or his students, then what do we do for the periods that, that teacher would otherwise be covered? And so there are a whole complex of, of issues. And Freedom's Frontier was talking about, well, maybe we can open up the window a little bit and make that money available to scout groups or to YMCA's or to other groups who could do field trips rather than for, for the moment or for the last few years, it's been only to schools. But it's, it's, it's not for want of resources on the receiving end. It's really getting schools back into the habit of having kids doing.
And I think assuring them that it's a worthwhile, that it's worth the effort that it takes on behalf of the schools to come out. And that presents opportunity for us. We, because of all of the great amount, we're still on that weaknesses part, the, because of the great opportunity that the, the, the way Congress was dealing with relief funds created for nonprofits to apply for grants, like especially for museums our size, the requirement for federal grants that you match your grant dollar for dollar, that disappeared, which meant we could apply for grants for what we needed rather than what we could just raise. It, it's meant that over the last three years, we've become incredibly reliant on grant funding to fund basic operations. And that's kind of a risky place to be because, you know, often you apply for the grant. If it's a federal grant, you apply for it in the spring. You find out in the fall if you've gotten it, and the grant period begins the following year. So it's, it puts us on, on shaky grounds in terms of sustaining operations at the level that they are now. And then we also, because of the way our budgeting works, and again, kind of that year, but year-to-year grant cycle, our planning tends to be focused on a year at a time when it would probably be most effective for us to think further out, look at problems in a longer range way and plan multi-year solutions towards getting to where we, we need to be. We, it's, it's just a fact of how we do business now. But, you know, that's one of the things that holds us back a little bit, especially from taking advantage of some of the opportunities which might be longer range. But they, they might take a longer period of time to realize a positive result. But some of the opportunities that we have as a collective of organizations are the shared resources, expertise, and staff that we have. You know, collectively, we have the knowledge of the history of the county. We also have the knowledge of the, the up-to-date museum preservation practices. So there's a lot there to build on. We have a great opportunity as heritage organizations holding collections to work with the school districts in new ways. The Kansas Curriculum is now encouraging teachers to teach with artifacts as primary resource material. And that's what an exhibit is. So we have a lot of skills that we could share and, and develop programs for schools if we had the time and the resources to focus on doing that kind of thing. That might be the thing that revives our field trips. And then we also have unique ways of connecting with underrepresented communities. And one of the best ways that we can help people understand their role in the community and make the broader community aware of the different cultures that, that are a part of us is by doing programming or exhibits that helps highlight different aspects of the culture and also work on developing collections that represent more completely the, the cultures in Douglas County. And those are, are all commitments that we're prepared to make. It means that you have to do things in a little bit different way or learn to do some new things. And that's where, that's where resourcing comes, comes into play. And then, you know, like all organizations, we do have some threats that come from the outside. We're all experiencing a pretty dramatic increase in occupancy costs, especially when it comes to utilities due to inflation. Everyone is experiencing those. But our resources are relatively limited, so to pay the electric bill, you have to pull back on something else or try to find a grant, which isn't always the easiest thing. We're all responsible for historic structures, which happen to be old, which mean they, they need a lot of repair. And they, that, it's not just like a one-time thing. They, over the next 10 years, they need that same repair again. So that's a cycle that we are on, and we have to be aware of. Because the longer you wait for some kinds of projects, the more expensive they get. And then we rely on volunteers really heavily, but those, those volunteers, they're aging, just, just like all of us are. And they're not immediately being replenished with a new crop of young volunteers, which means we have to find new ways of connecting with people who want to help us. Maybe that means sending out a new message about what we do, finding new ways for them to support our, our organizations, or just getting a better effort to recruit people. Because usually our volunteers are recruited because a current volunteer tells a friend of theirs, who's probably pretty much like them, that, hey, this is a lot of fun. Why don't you volunteer too? And, you know, that way of advancing our core or building it larger just doesn't meet our needs anymore.
Is that information anecdotal, kind of looking around and kind of gauging people's ages? Or are you taking, kind of tracking the ages of active volunteers? So we can kind of see like if we do start to move the needle, will we know that we have?
It's, it's very obvious anecdotal information now. We do get student volunteers, so it's, that's not, you know, all, all the, it's not the, retirees aren't our only source of volunteers. But I would think as moving forward, especially if we put in an effort to specifically recruit new and different kinds of volunteers that we would want to build a system, and that would actually be pretty easy to do. We could ask them on their registration for their age or their birth date. We just don't include that on our registration form right now.
How about within membership and newsletters? Do you kind of track demographics for who's receiving those or who's participating in that way? Because that might be an indication of, maybe we're not getting those volunteers because we're not reaching that demographic at all? And how else to message?
Again, most of what we see is anecdotal. When we, when we do a members program, we see who comes to the members program. We do have a little bit more information, though, about our members to know where they are. Building our membership bases and, and refreshing them with new young members is another issue that we will have to someday deal with. The resources we get from our membership programs also help to support our operations. Actually, a lot of our public programming is funded by membership, membership dues. It's just not as pressing an issue right now, the diversity in the age of our membership base as it is of our volunteer base. We're all trying to make our buildings publicly accessible or prepare for an event. And, you know, when people call in sick or someone that you've relied on for the last five years to do this one part of your program says, you know, I just don't think I can come out like I used to. Those create immediate problems. So that's kind of why it's felt like we needed to focus on building up those volunteers and diversifying that volunteer base.
Thanks, Steve. I think we're going to transition to some perspective from Caitlin and the HCC transitionists.
I really just have a little bit to say today, just to kind of give HCC's perspective on sort of the kind of collective partnership among heritage organizations and how that aligns with our strategic plan. So HCC, the Heritage Conservation Council, went through a strategic planning process at the end of last year and really set HCC on the path to be a more advisory organization. So supporting partner organizations, supporting programs that kind of advise the community. And so I really included the piece from our strategic plan here specifically about partner organizations. So really, HCC's goal is to be a catalyst in the community and really unite these partners together, both existing and potential future partners to be included at the table. And this could be through providing funding and building that capacity, so connecting them to resources. The two main strategies associated with this goal is first encouraging the partnership. So that seems to be kind of along the way, and we're excited to be a part of that ongoing partnership process. And that's what Steve was just talking about, that they really realize that that's a, a key need and can bring a lot of benefit to the community. The second piece is to promote their work, and especially here, especially those working in underrepresented communities. So going kind of beyond the traditional scope of heritage to include some other organizations or resources that might be included to kind of expand that view of heritage and to maintain those trusted and reciprocal relationships. So really, you know, not just gathering them together, but being a member at the table to really facilitate these programs. you know, not just gathering them together, but being a member at the table to really facilitate these programs. And so kind of our HCC's kind of main goals and objectives that we kind of outlined here that we'd like to kind of bring to the table. As far as how HCC wants to kind of see the direction forward. Firstly, HCC really can be this equitable resource for the community to distribute funding, whether that be county funding or potentially being a source for external funding through pass-through grants. I think my role as the coordinator and HCC is really can be that sort of central source for the community, however that looks, you know, in the future. But it really positions us well to be able to reach all the organizations and can really do that in an equitable way. Second, again, this goes into exactly what Steve was saying, is ensuring, encouraging collective resources and knowledge sharing. So making sure that, you know, folks have access to all this information, you know, if, if one group excels in one area, other groups can learn from that or use that resource. And so HCC can kind of help facilitate that. So that burden doesn't fall on a single organization. I mean, third is really, I think reflects some of the perspective of the HCC members and through the planning process that is really identified. Is to embrace a broader view of cultural heritage. So beyond the traditional tangible heritage of museums. Expanding that to include, you know, that intangible piece of heritage through storytelling, through events and celebrations, finding a way to ensure that organizations that put on annual celebrations that promote cultural heritage, you know, within their communities. Finding a way to get them access to these same resources and, you know, find a way that HCC can support that. Additionally, other ways of sharing stories and sharing heritage, whether that be through art-based programming. You know, poetry, other sorts of art that helps share that heritage beyond the traditional like print media or, you know, websites, finding opportunities there. And also there's quite a few organizations working to share heritage through community building. So really bringing together some of these underrepresented groups. You know, from that, again, that own voice perspective as well. So, you know, people who are of that community, sharing their heritage amongst each other. A lot of them focus on community building. So if you can bring folks together, then you can start to go down that process of telling stories and collecting that intangible heritage. And so we're really excited to hear your thoughts and questions of sort of next steps and how to proceed with this process. But we've identified two main steps. First would be identifying additional community groups, organizations, resources that are not currently receiving county funding. And sorting, sort of identifying who's out there right now and how they could be included in these conversations as well. And we've already started some of those projects and processes. And I know, you know, I'm new to this position, but Amy and Mike and other folks have been, you know, starting that process of working with some other groups and you know, just starting that, that identifying process. And then once we have some groups identifying or identified hosting a town hall or other sort of, you know, community forum to assess the needs of both new groups and the existing groups and seeing, you know, again, seeing what resources can be shared, how can HCC best support them? Items like that. But yeah, I think that gives a pretty good baseline. And, you know, I think we'd be open to any questions and Mike and Amy can help me answer questions as well too and provide a bit more context than I can.
Sure. I want, I just want to add one more thing before we go to questions because where you ended up really aligns with where we have, I don't know if you've come at it from this direction, we've come at it, the heritage sites have come at it from the, from the opposite direction, but we are now sharing that same kind of vision that you have for, you know, what do we do as a collective that helps us preserve and engage people with the entirety of the heritage, of the county's heritage. And I think some next step, next steps might be after we've undergone the kind of discovery phase that you're in now and see what needs are. You know, once again, we sit on infrastructure. If it's gathering places, groups need to tell their stories. We're sites with gathering places. So we can start to get a better sense of how all of the pieces of the puzzle will come together. By combining the, the, the HCC's kind of broader look at the county as a whole. And the expertise and infrastructure that is maintained on a regular basis by the heritage sites. I think it really presents an opportunity to approach heritage in a completely different kind of way.
So I'm not sure if it's a question or maybe just something for us to talk about, but last week we had the Juneteenth organization here asking for funding. Are you engaged with them? I mean, I think that's a great example of a cultural heritage celebration, an event that could be incorporated into that. Is, are you doing anything there? Is?
Yes, they're using our facility for a couple of their programs and we are developing a tour for them, an Underground Railroad tour. You know, I don't know what the, what the solution is for like having all of that happen in a more like, well, in a less one-off kind of way where everyone thinks of their program and comes to you for some money to do it. I, you know, I don't know how we get out of that pattern because we're in it, but often what these groups are trying to do are things that we are already doing. We just don't do them on the same schedule or with the same content. So if there was a way to bring those together, there and, and the resources were there to support it, the Juneteenth Festival could run on Watkins Museum infrastructure. Because it just happens like catty corner across the street and they use our restrooms anyway. So, you know, feels like there should be ways that we could utilize that in a more efficient way.
Yeah. And I think that where, where we, where we landed when we talked about this before, just a pre-conversation before today with Sarah last week was, you know, we still think that we're in a discovery phase. A lot of progress has been made. There's a lot of good intent and good ideas and a lot of progress being made, but we also have a new strategic plan that really, you know, aligns nicely with this direction. We have a new heritage program coordinator. There's a lot going on and we think it, you know, some of the advice that Sarah and I provided was like, let's continue to lean into where the, the path that we're on. Lean on, you know, the, the work, Caitlin's role and the, the focus of the HCC in this space. To keep learning and developing what's the right model. That being said, you know, if there's a, if there's an opportunity to set aside some funding at some point, you know, how that can be best utilized and we still don't know the answers to that as well, but we, we know we have, we have some different ways of doing that. But we also want to let the process continue to play out a little bit more with the leadership of Caitlin and the HCC.
Yeah, I guess I'd say in addition to the sort of saying it's discovery, it's more evolutionary. And I think some of this is just going to take time and, and figure out where alignment happens, you know. I, I know when we met and talked, you know, Amy mentioned that you've had some outreach to like the Dia de los Muertos group. And like, they really want some of that to stay, they want to hold some of those things to themselves. So I think it really it, it will be very specific to the particular project. But maybe there's something else that they need or we can at least promote, you know, and maybe you can talk a little bit about some of that experience.
Yeah, is that, this is Amy. As I was speaking with different groups in Douglas County so far, a lot of it, I think, is the idea that they have that they're self-managing the way that they want to do something and very happy to collaborate in using spaces, but at the same time, it's their event. And maybe it's not open to everyone in Douglas County. I think we have to kind of embrace that idea that some heritage events are for the group that's doing it. And they want to have, you know, their event that they have. They don't have to seek funding every single year on repeat to do something. And then seeing, you know, how that can be a draining process for lack of a better term, constantly coming in front of the commission, ask for money for something that's culturally important to you. So that was the, kind of how I interfaced with the groups. I think then on top of that, having them be able to be in the same community group as the other heritage groups and then have those conversations where they could use facility, use facilities and stuff, but still be in charge and have that self-presence for their, their projects they want to work on. And so that would be kind of where I would be very adamant that we focus on the idea that we don't, no, no one gets to be bracketed under someone else, that these are all equal positions and that each heritage group gets to have their own say over how they want to use their funding.
In terms of other organizations that are doing heritage kinds of work, but are not place-based, which is kind of what you're talking about with the festivals and such as opposed to our heritage sites. I know there have been collaborations with the NAACP Local Chapter History Group, history. That they're very active. They have quite a bit that's going on. And I think there are active collaborations also with people already at the table here, but, but that's another one that, you know, it's, it's not a place-based one. So it doesn't make this list, but I think there are a lot more opportunities. Can you talk about what's been going on or what might be going on?
Yeah, I think that you're correct. Some, mostly these new organizations are not, are not tangible based or brick and mortar based. They'd be obviously looking more towards something that is an intangible experience. So I've met with Black Lawrence, which is a black literature and arts collective of Kansas. And spoke with them about some of their, what they, with their programming, their needs and trying to understand what, what interfaces well with that. And they have a lot of different events that happen, but most of the, most of them, yeah, they could, they're happy to utilize buildings and, and they, they collaborate with tons of partners for their in the know series they work with. I mean, Watkins, United Way, Juneteenth, Public Health, I mean, just like Spencer Art Museum, they're, they're very collaborative. It's not a but at the same time to have it be sort of their educational series that they get to hold on to and, and manage. They spend a lot of time fundraising for, in the know, in order to to, to every year to kind of get it running and to have something that just be set in stone, that this is going to be something that we don't have to worry about taking care of every single year, that it's part of a calendar of events would be really beneficial. And then you talked about Dia de Muertos and Somos Lawrence too, same thing. We funded their grant, HCC did, to do the celebrations last year and to just speaking with people from there, that organization, just having the, the freedom to know that every single year you're able to do that, to, you can do Dia de Muertos and you can celebrate that. And that, and, and they had hundreds of people come for it. And sort of just knowing that that's part, that that's celebrated in Douglas County and that this is something that's important to us as well. Sorry Caitlin.
Are there collaborations around like grant funding for some of these organizations where just an organization to, you know, hold the funds and distribute the funds where they don't have to, if they're volunteer-based and you have staff. Are those collaborations that also happen?
We had some extensive discussions at the HCC about this and we also had, you know, the beginnings of the conversation last week with, with Sarah and Jill. One of the things that the existing heritage organizations have, have tried to do this year, looking forward is to see what sort of collective resources they can share. And a couple of ideas have been kicked around like a volunteer coordinator or additional curatorial help that would get all of the collections actually identified and into a common system. So everybody would know what everybody else has. And, and when, when Amy talked with the, with the Black Lawrence folks, most of their requirement for funding is to hire performers and artists and whatnot. And they don't rely so much on, on you know, on volunteers. And so a, a paid volunteer coordinator that could help send the summertime volunteers to Clinton Lake and wintertime volunteers to the, to the holiday celebration at La Compton probably doesn't, doesn't help them very much, but we won't know what some of these other entities, these other heritage institutions can use and what their, and, and how they might be able to use shared facilities. Until we get a little farther down the road in this discovery process and have this, this town hall or this discussion. What, you know, what help do you need in, you know, in what quantities, at what times, what different sorts of things? I think once we get a better sense of that, then you could decide, hmm. Maybe, maybe contracting with somebody who does grant writing for 300 hours or 500 hours of grant writing that would, that would help target grants to these things would be a useful expenditure of county money, not, not bringing a grant writer onto the staff, but, but contracting with somebody to do that. But again, it, it's some of that decision-making about where the county's resources could best be deployed has to follow the fat gathering process.
And I guess I want to put a plug in that in addition to county resources, there are other resources. And, you know, one of the things that we discussed was, you know, transient guest tax dollars from the city of Lawrence, you know, there's processes through that, festivals that bring activities and events to town, bring people to stay in hotels and, and, and eat in restaurants. So could a collective application be put into the city's TGT process for a number of different groups or festivals, having money flow through, you know, Watkins, for example, might be a project that could happen. So I do think that those things are, that's what's really exciting here is, you know, really there's so much great potential in this space.
And also maybe a, a potential collective approach to getting corporate sponsors for some of these events. Put together a whole array of festivals and go after a couple of big sponsors rather than doing the one thing at a time, which is how we're all doing it right now. We all fund our programs exactly the same way, whether we're a county-funded organization or not. We, you know, we look at what all of our expenses are because of our staffing and occupancy. And then whatever we have left over, we figure out, oh yeah, we can do the, we can do these programs. So, you know, having a broader effort to bring in new money would be a benefit to everyone.
Can I switch a little and ask about Freedom's Frontier? And maybe that goes over to Micah. You did say that you were on the board. What is Freedom's Frontier? How does it interact with our place-based heritage sites? And how does it then interact with some of these more story-based concepts that we've been talking about?
I, I wish to listen to her here. She, she could kick me if I'm, if I'm heading in the wrong direction. Freedom Frontier is a national heritage area. Funded in part by the, by the National Park Service and also expected to get matching funds from the communities that they serve. The matching funds in, for Freedom's Frontier in large part are Douglas County funds. That, that are distributed to the various heritage organizations. That makes up the, the lion's share of the, of the local contribution that, that Freedom Frontier reflects. And, and then I don't know what the, what the match is, but they get a substantial amount of National Park Service money.
Can I ask just real quick there, but doesn't Freedom's Frontier cover a dozen counties or more?
Oh, it actually does. It covers about 18 or 20 counties on the Kansas side and about
11 or 12 on the Missouri.
Missouri side. And, and the whole, the, the whole underlying concept when it was first established was the, the, the Civil War border struggle and ensuing, you know, freedom, the, the struggle. And you can see some of the indications in, in the headquarters building over in the, in the Carnegie building. It's made up largely of place-based entities, local historical societies, the, the, you know, the Johnson County Museum, the Windott County Museum, the Fort Leavenworth, Leavenworth Museums, Watkins, Mine Creek, Baxter Springs, just all of this. Yeah. And, and they're, they're all partners. There are a few non-place-based entities, maybe more than a few, because there are 150 or so partners, maybe more than that. Folks like the Civil War Roundtable, Roundtable in Kansas City and the Western Missouri, that's, that's a major player in that. And they're, they, they have some grant funding that's available to mostly for educational projects, some like the, the bus trip. They, they do supply grants to support relatively small-scale activities of one sort or another, you know, events. They but they're largely an organization to help build capacity among their members. And they're trying to do more of that by pairing experienced executive directors with, with less experienced volunteer directors about, you know, how to access various kinds of funding and things like that. And they do some of that training. They, they've got an educational mission for their, for their folks. They bring the partners together through four times a year to, to talk about what's going on and what they can do for, and how to access the grant, the grant funding. It was, it, it was a project that, that Judge Donnell Ha Ha, who was, I think on the faculty at the time, or she may have already been a judge. Not only helped to, to get off the ground, but also helped to ensure that the headquarters was in Lawrence. As opposed to Kansas City, which was also making a play for it. And one of the draws was by, by getting the county that was already funding a variety of heritage agencies to And one of the draws was by, by getting the county that was already funding a variety of heritage agencies to to, to call that their contribution to the heritage area. So it's, it's Douglas County is the largest, shows as the largest matching entity in although it's, it's no more than, basically no more than the money than, that the county has already given to each of the partner entities.
Was there an intention that other counties in the area of that thirty counties would step up to be somewhere in the ballpark of what Douglas County does?
So if I can jump in a little bit with that, just to, might even kick me if I'm wrong. I think there, there's no formal agreement that each of those thirty counties do the same thing that Douglas County has done. I would, and I don't know that that would be something that Freedom's Frontier could require. That also being said, there's only so much match needed to pull down the funds available. I, I'd also say it's, so I, I, that's, I, I think they do talk about that. But you, many of those thirty counties are not nearly as generous in their support of heritage resources as Douglas County.
Right.
So, and it might not work the same. For example, the Johnson County Museum is a Department of Johnson County Government. So I'm not sure that they could run their entire budget through Freedom's Frontier in the same way we make a payment to the historical societies through a community partner process. But, but my understanding is they do actively work with their partners, that if, if there are ways that that, they can leverage more match dollars, they do. We just have a particularly unique situation here with how our funding works and from what I understand.
And I asked the, I asked the question, would it help? Because we've been, the HCC has been granting additional funds beyond the funds that, that go to the, over the years. And I asked some years ago whether or not Freedom's Frontier would benefit from showing those funds also as part of the match. And the answer at that point was we have all the match we need to qualify for all of the federal money we can get. They, they actually have, there was a brief discussion today, they've added an additional pass-through of entity in one, in another county that's doing more or less at a much smaller level. But it doesn't, I, I guess the short answer is it doesn't cost Douglas County any more than Douglas County was already spending on heritage to do this. But Lawrence made a contribution of the building or the free space in, in the building is their sort of contribution to the
But it draws down federal money that then we have access to through their grant program. So we don't expend any of our own, own resources helping them, but it makes resources available for us.
Okay, so that, beyond kind of that capacity building, which frankly, it sounds like a lot of that is happening at the table amongst Douglas County partners already. And, and maybe
We're a little more collaborative than in many other counties, or in many other counties, there's just one organization. So there's no one else to collaborate with.
Does that put us, or are, are organizations on kind of a, a teaching end of those collaborations? Or are we also receiving back some, some of their expertise?
Actually, yes, we're often used as an example in, in, in the heritage area. But with Lucinda being new, the, Lucinda is the, the director, she hasn't been there a year yet. But, you know, she's thinking about different ways to provide benefit or impact her partners and to impact the communities that her partners are parts of. And I think where, where we have especially good advantages is that we've already got a working relationship. So we can maybe start to invent some new ways of utilizing resources and expertise from Freedom's Frontier to have an impact on the kinds of things that we're, we want to do here. Or, you know, perhaps even to bring, you know, bring in the involvement of other kinds of heritage agencies without forcing them into full-scale partnership. You know, all of those things might be, although there are no dues to being a partner, so.
Steve.
There might be advantage to that.
And on that note, I think, you know, we, we've got a few minutes left to today's session now, I want to cut off questions, but I also want to make sure, because we have partners here. If, if folks want to come up and if there's stuff that hasn't been mentioned that you think is worth mentioning in the last, next few minutes, you can, I can trace faces with you here. There's a couple, there's a seat next to Steve. I just want to make sure we're not, if anybody wants to come up, all yours, but. All right. We, we don't, I'll just say we, we don't have too much time, but we have a few minutes.
Right at the mic. And I can hand those out, Paul. I'll let you go to the mic here.
We came up, or whoever it was. We came up with the lesson plans for La Compton.
Into the microphone, please.
Which have been very, very beneficial. You can look them over. We now have something to pass out to schools when they want to know. And quite frankly, shockingly, within the last month, we've had a major increase in schools. All, both Leavenworth Junior Highs plus the junior high at the fort are coming, which is three hundred and fifty students, which is suddenly, I don't know what happened. I also, we were gifted the lith, the lithograph of the first territorial legislature by a couple of teachers from by a couple of teachers from Washburn Rural, who we partnered with for years. They found this at a sale, they paid seven hundred dollars. And I want you to read through what this one teacher researched each one of the members of the first elected territorial legislature that met at Constitution Hall. It's an unbelievable research for people in Lawrence. One of the things that I found, we always hear Spear, but Spear's son, if you look through there, was a page at the first legislature that met in Constitution Hall. And today was a very interesting day in La Compton because we had always scheduled, already scheduled, our Marshals, Center Marshals Office was already coming. But we had a call from the Kansas City Star and they wanted to come out and take pictures of buildings. And it relates to the Heritage Council because one of their emphasis is on little jails. And the jail was moved by the Heritage Council from across the alley. Otherwise it would have probably been destroyed because the people just didn't want it. And I can understand it. And I think that's, well, the other thing that I think is good is that Patrick Zoller has been a fresh air. Because in the forty years we've been doing this, I've never received a phone call from the executive director of the Kansas State Historical Society. He called at night and he is working to open up the historical sites year-round, which is the only Constitution Hall is. And to remove the charge that was placed six dollars for, to get into some of them. But through Marcy Francisco and Tom Sloan, they reduced Constitution Hall to three dollars. And what Steve has said and what we've attended these Panasonic meetings that the chamber and county. And one of the things they're looking for is things that will help draw people to Douglas County. And everything that's been talked about here tonight are things that these citizens and businesses are looking for. And I think that's, oh, I'll pass out this, and I'm going to say this until my dying day, they can put it on the tombstone. But Kansas is the birthplace of the Civil War.
Yeah.
Kansas is the birthplace of the Civil War and there is no doubt about it. No doubt about it, a hundred people died in Kansas and a Nebraska kid get national television exposure for a tagline that says Nebraska, not for everybody. Think what Kansas could get by putting a tagline that said Kansas, birthplace of the Civil War, not South Carolina. So I'll stop.
Anyone else from our partner organizations? Okay, well, I, I just had a couple of comments and I was a little late for questions. But for one, I, I appreciate over the past four years, the progress this group has made. When I started on the commission, I remember that we weren't working together much at all. And so it's really, I think you should be really encouraged with, with the work that you're doing together. That's exciting to see. And, and I can hear in your voices like, well, we're not where we want to be working together. And it, it's really clear that you're wanting to work with some other groups. And yet honor that there is a certain affinity that comes with those groups and wanting them to maintain their own culture and their own heritage. And that's a, that's a balance. And I appreciate you recognizing that and, and giving space and time to, to understand how we can help and support. I think that the mission of that HCC as it's changed, as your strategic plan can help maybe find some funding resources. And, and I encourage you, as you think about, you know, engaging new audiences, and we talked a bit about schools. Knowing that schools are changing in the way that they think about these things. And, you know, while we get lots of materials about what white men have done in Douglas County, our teachers are being encouraged to think about the students in their classes seeing themselves in the history of Kansas. And so as we try to adapt programs and think about, and I know this is hard for some families, the changing of Broken Arrow and, and that school. And that's going to be a Native American student space. Are there opportunities there to, to partner with some of those organizations and create? And I know you do already, I'm not saying that you don't already, but create more experiences that our students and the underrepresented groups see themselves in the history of Kansas. Even if that history is not something we're particularly proud of. But I think, I think you're headed in that right direction and I really appreciate your efforts on that. I can hear in your voices that you're not meeting your aspiration yet, but that's okay. You've come a long way in the four years that I've been watching this closely and, and thank you for all your work.
I, I want to let you know that the, the, the lesson, field trip lesson plans look at different communities and, and involvement. The Watkins Museum looks at the contributions of women in our community. Udora focuses on Native Americans. So we've been thinking about that the same way to try to, to, but try to be where the schools need us to be.
That's good, I, I want to learn more about that and, and we can touch base on that and see if we can get that information out. Yeah. Anything else, Commissioner?
Along that note also, I've seen a fair number of programs through Udora Historical Society, talking about the Jewish history of Udora. And that's exciting too.
Super, so thank you very much for your time. We will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.